Almighty Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the beauty of this day and the blessings that were in it. Father, we thank you for the blessing of this council meeting and these men and women who served this city, sacrificed their time, and we just thank you so much for their service. Father, we thank you for their families and the sacrifice they make as well. Father, we give you all the glory and the honor for this beautiful city and those who govern and lead in this beautiful place. Father, we thank you for this great nation and this great state and the freedoms that we enjoy. We take them for granted, Lord, but we know there are men and women who are all over the world tonight sacrificing so that we can freely assemble like we're doing here. Thank you for them and their service. Thank you for their families and their sacrifice that they make. But ultimately, Lord, we know that you made the ultimate sacrifice, Father God, and your Son Jesus, the sacrifice that both of you made on the cross for us. Thank you for the blood that was shed, binds us together, cleanses us of our sins. We ask all these favors in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and please be seated. Next, we move into community-related announcements. I'm going around the hall or shoe with, starting with Ms. Eads.
So, this Saturday, August 29th, is the 5K9 race, as a reminder. And I haven't heard that registrations have closed for that, but if you have any questions about that, those applications, registration forms are still out there. They are going to be selling T-shirts, as I understand it, out at the race, as well as some auction items. And then Saturday also at 1:00 PM is our Back the Blue Rally at the Park. And Saturday at, I believe it's 9 o'clock, is the yoga at the park. So, lots of fun events coming up right there. Pass.
Okay. Anybody?
I have a few.
I just want to announce that public schools are back in session, and we need to pay attention to school zones, buses, loading zones, and everything else, and just watch out for the kids and give the drivers a break, you know, the buses.
Thank you. City announcements, we have a reminder that we have Labor Day coming up on Monday, September 7th. City facilities will be closed. Trash collection, for those that are collected on Monday, September 7th, will be picked up on Wednesday, the 9th. So, put your receptacles out on the evening of the 8th or early morning on the 9th. September 7th is the annual doggy paddle at Reno Swim and Slide. Now, there are going to be two sessions with the first 150 dogs in each session. First session is at 6:30 that goes to 8:00 PM, and the second session is at 8:30, running through 10:00 PM. This year, only the owner and up to two dogs are allowed in the facility, and tickets are $6 per dog. Must be purchased in advance at the Eventbrite.com. No pet owners will be allowed in the water with their dogs. September 12th is our annual free fishing clinic for children ages 6 to 15 at Joby Barnes Park from 8:00 to 11:00 AM, and registration begins at 7:30 AM. September 19th is Cruisin' for Coffee at 8:00 AM at the Santa Fe Steakhouse parking lot. September 26th is our Rockin' Regional with live music. It's a free event from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Regional Park. And we'll be in Regional Park with social distancing guidelines and masks required for that event, too, please. Time's running out on to complete the 2020 Census. Not too late. Residents need to respond now if they have not yet completed their census information, or they can respond online at 2020census.gov. And please sign up for our MidwestCityOK.com website and click on Your Community, and you'll receive news flashes for all the events and announcements for the city of Midwest City. That's all I have, Mayor.
So, anyone have anything else? Okay, well, we do have a proclamation. Mr. Graal, could you meet me up front? Is on?
Can you hear me? This is also one of those bittersweet moments. I've known Mr. Graal for a long time now, and he's been involved in our community for quite a while, and he's got quite a resume. But anyway, I'll go ahead and read this, and we can discuss it in a minute. Whereas Mr. Stan Graal was appointed to the Planning Commission in July of 2000, elected as chairman in February of 2015, and is retiring in August of 2020. Whereas Stan is a kind, well-spoken leader, always ensuring that the members of the public were given an opportunity to voice their opinions during public hearings, and due to his dedication and passion for bettering his community, he made sure that he's well-versed in city and state codes, providing intelligent and meaningful explanations to concerned citizens. Whereas during his time in the Planning Commission, he also served Short Term and Sign Ordinance Committee, I'd really be shocked, Trails Committee, Airport Zoning Commission, and Local Development Act Review Committee. Whereas Stan was vital to the success of the 2018 Midwest City Innovation District Study, coordinating between Midwest City and Rose State College to complete the study, and has progressed the quality of life and economic development of the city. Whereas Stan is a U.S. Air Force veteran, honorary AWACS commander, vice president of the Government and Military Relations at Rose State, has played a pivotal role in reinstatement of Rose State College Small Business Development Center, and maintaining a working relationship with Tinker Air Force Base by facilitating the Tinker Air Force Base Partnership with the Tinker Air Force Base Transition Assistance Program, or TAP, in which those leaving the military can train and work after their service. Also, Stan has been recommended for a state-level award, the Planning Commission, Planning Award for the state, and will probably receive that award. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor Midwest City, do hereby appoint, August 25th, 2020, is Stan Graal Day, and ask the citizens of Midwest City to recognize Stan's contributions and leadership to our community and in the Tinker Air Force Base community. There's no replacement for this guy. He's a city manager. He's done it all, seen it all, and has been a great assistance to our community, as well as others. And Stan, I appreciate your commitment to us, to Rose State, and just the betterment and mankind. Thank you so much for your contribution in Midwest City. You don't feel strange. We know it won't be.
Do you have anything to say?
I was born in St. Louis, Missouri, but Midwest City is mine.
Thanks, Stan, so much. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience which discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 6, asked to be removed. No action taken pending review of the city attorney.
And I'd like to remove Item 10.
Item 10. Okay.
Six and 10.
So, the chair would entertain a motion to remove Item 6 pending review of the, no action taken pending review of the city attorney, and Item 10.
Motion.
Are we going to bring 10 back to discuss?
Okay. Motion to approve, except 6 and 10.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item 6, again, there's no action needed pending review of the city attorney. Item 10 is a discussion and consideration of entering into an approving agreement for professional services with Lee Engineering LLC, and the amount of $67,500 to provide construction plans for upgrading force signals and replacing school zone flashers citywide. Mr. Bundy?
That's really not necessary, Mr. Bundy, sorry. I just wanted to bring acknowledgement to this item. I saw in the materials that there was a lot of federal funding, like over $700,000 behind this project, so I wanted to give thanks to city staff who helped to secure that federal grant. And I also wanted to give thanks for the city's investment there because a lot of those school zone flashers are in need of repairs. Some of them, there are none, and it's just great that we're able to do that citywide, and I'm very thankful for that, for the safety of our kids. So, I just wanted to give acknowledgement to that. And with that, I would move to approve.
And I likewise like to say, I really appreciate the great job you have done.
Are we moving to solar?
Yes, sir. Air control and solar.
Awesome. Well, I do have a motion, and did you second it, Christine?
Well, I motioned, and I don't know if I need to... Well, I second it.
Okay. I'm going to motion and second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
So, we recognize Brandon Bundy on this project, and of course, Billy Harless is supervisor, so good job, guys, on this project.
Sorry, thank you for your attention.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into our discussion items on this agenda. Actually, Item Number 1 and Item Number 7, no actions needed on either one of these items, so Mr. Lyons, Item 2.
Item 2, discussion Item 2, PC 2047, discussion and consideration of approval of the proposed preliminary plat of Freedom Villas described as a part of the southeast corridor of Section 35, Township 12 North, Range 2 West, located at 8712 East Main Street. No action was taken on this item at the July 28th council meeting. Billy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lyon. As Mr. Lyon pointed out, this is the same 4.79 acre development that we heard at the July 28th meeting. We had Mr. Goldschlager there that kind of protested or asked more questions about drainage, as we're always concerned about drainage. It gave us an opportunity to go out on August 4th, and I appreciate Councilman Bowen and Councilman Byrne to come out and meet with us on-site, along with Mr. Goldschlager, to talk over some of the issues, in particular where some of the drainage was going and how this is going to be laid out. And I think, and also the owner and his engineer, the consulting engineer was there as well. And I think we answered all the questions there, but I'll be glad to answer any questions if there's any more, or is that a pleasure?
I want to thank you, Billy, because going out, seeing the site, and looking at what's going on gives you a better picture of what's going to be there. And it gives us a better picture of how it's going to be, that's going to solve the issue of draining in that area.
Yes.
So, I think that's the best way to do it, is go out to the site and look at what's going on.
And it came up out of the site that it was very helpful to see that, and I'll throw this opportunity, or take this opportunity, to put it out there to the council or whoever would like to. You know, we have a couple of weeks between Planning Commission and council meetings that if a council member or somebody would like to meet out on-site, staff would be able, glad to do that, to walk through some of these issues. We'll do whatever it takes to make everyone comfortable with the decisions you have to make, and if that helps, please feel free to give me a call, and we'll be glad to do that.
Okay, the applicant and his engineer is also present tonight. Is there any questions of them? Or Mr. Harless? Hearing done, are you going to entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thanks for being here, you guys. Item Number 3, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of accepting a status update on OG&E street lighting maintenance. Street... Sorry.
Need to turn my mic on. Discussion and consideration of accepting a status update on OG&E street lighting maintenance. This is our quarterly report. Mr. Streets, our Public Works Director's here, along with two representatives from OG&E. I know one, I'm not sure who the other one is, but we'll find out soon.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to talk to you a little about, provide an update related to our streetlight project. I know that a few years ago, we'd had some challenges related to the time it took to get streetlight issues resolved, and OG&E looked to develop a partnership with us through a lot of help with Von Sullivan, and most recently with the help of Kimberly Adams at OG&E, and has been a great help to us. As you know, we have a streetlight technician now that works part-time to go look at these lights, which are obviously dim and aren't lit, and work through a point of contact with OG&E to get those lights that are dim turned back on, or in some cases, updated or upgraded to the new LED lamps. And so, to that end, we keep a spreadsheet of all those complaints or concerns. You'll see that in this, in the document that you have in front of you that came with the council agenda. And as you can see, there aren't many. They've done a very good job of staying on top of it. We appreciate the partnership with OG&E. They've been very, very reactive, and I've seen some positive results. If you've ever driven down 15th Street in either direction, now you'll see that there are more LED lights now than there ever have been. The roadway lighting is much, much better. It's easier to see, and so I appreciate their efforts. And would entertain any questions of me about that progress if the report isn't self-explanatory? And obviously, Kimberly is here. If she would like to provide an update or answer any questions, provided the council has any.
Paul, I got just one quick question for you. It's probably just an oversight on here. There was a bad pole wire loose reported on 3/12/20. It shows that the job was still pending. Date received is 4/13. Is it fixed, and probably that's an oversight, or has it been pending for four months?
Sometimes, so I'll just tell you, there may be a lag time because they have to do some engineering work, and there may be some locates that aren't necessarily readily available, or there may need to be some effort made through engineering at OG&E to do an upgrade or improve it, and that sometimes is done through a third party or contractor and not always expedited. So, not necessarily to defend that particular situation, but in all likelihood, if there's a delay...
I wasn't complaining. This is, we have come so much infinitely farther than we were when we brought this up two, three years ago.
2017, yes.
That I think a good job, and I wasn't complaining on this. I was just, that's the only outlier out there.
Observation, yeah.
But the communication that you guys have, that was absent before, I haven't had a complaint from a resident about a light in probably a year, and that's a huge improvement over where it had been.
I think it would also be remiss if I did not thank Brandon Bundy, who is also kind of, he's trying to stay on point with a couple of special projects related to parks and trail lighting, and you've also got that included in your packet, and he provided an update, the CMO, and we decided to include that at Von's request because we felt like that would be pretty valuable to you, and some successful projects where they've gone into some neighborhoods and put in some lighting that either wasn't adequate or made significant improvements. Any questions of me before we maybe invite Kimberly? If Kimberly, you'd like to come forward and say a few things?
Well, I have one, but I don't know if this is for you or them, but I asked a question. So, what is the timeframe for converting all of the lights to LED?
Good question. Good job, Christine.
Good evening, everyone, and I think I know everyone, but again, I'm Kimberly Adams with OG&E, and we are in the second year of a five-year program to change out or transition to fully LEDs, okay? And right now, there is about 295,000 lights in OG&E's service area that will be transitioned over this five-year period to LEDs. We've got about 24% of those completed, okay? So, kind of keep those numbers in mind, you know, second year of a five-year plan, and that's kind of where we are. And when I calculated where we are in Midwest City, we have a little over 2,900 streetlights in Midwest City that OG&E maintains. We've changed out 770 of those. So, that puts Midwest City proper as about 26% complete. So, we're kind of on line with where we are in the whole service area for the time that we've started embarking on this project. So, I guess the short answer is five years is how long the project will last. And keep in mind that we don't change out to LEDs until the lights go out. We, you know, we let the current lights expire. That's a lot due to cost. And now, in some situations, we can go in and change an entire circuit, but I would just say we'd have to kind of consider that on a case-by-case basis. But when, if there is one light that's out, and it seems like there might, or two or three even on a circuit, we still may wait for a couple of more lights to go out so we can change out that entire circuit. And I hope that makes some sense as far as cost and efficiency. But to echo what Paul said, I think we have a tremendous partnership with Midwest City, and in those situations, if that does arise in the future, I feel confident we can work through them just by communication and making some things happen.
Does that include the lights that are in the main image, too, that are on the wall?
If they are an OG&E maintained light, yes.
Any other questions?
I have one. So, for example, I understand your rationale, and I understand the cost-efficiency piece, but with regard to, like, we're about to put in a new animal shelter, for example. So, if there are lights there, is there any way to put in a special request to do upgrades so that our nice fancy new project that is being purchased with bond money also has great up-to-date lighting in front of it, or is that not a possibility?
No, I think it's for sure a possibility. I mean, we'd have to kind of dig into it just a little bit further, see what's there, what's the status of what's there, and then, I mean, I can't tell you 100%. Yes, we'll take care of it, but we can certainly probably make some significant headway with it, just by the communication and the partnership.
Thank you. Just curious.
If you did a chance, if you haven't seen, some of the parks, in fact, they have, and they've changed out complete batches of those lights, primarily to make sure that we were making improvements, make some headway in terms of value to the public and visibility, and improve some things, not only for PD, but other groups, make them feel a little safer in the parks. So, they actually are very responsive. If we give them, if we make a request or an ask, they'll send someone out, and we're able to kind of coordinate that effort and try to get it in a timely manner, so.
So, can I make that ask internally, like, if we're on a bond project, that we also look at the lighting that's ancillary to it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Have a conversation at least? I mean...
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can do that, and this is, yeah, internally, we'll talk about this. Remind me tomorrow at our staff meeting.
Okay.
Is there any other questions?
I need to make a statement. Kimberly, I appreciate what you've done over the last couple of years in bringing this up because you're a service provider, just like the city is, and people sometimes don't understand that they're not the only person that's asking for help, and people forget that sometimes. Thank you very much.
You've been very kind. Thank you.
I want to echo that, too, the relationship that you've developed with us, and just the text messages, hey, we've got an outage, we're getting it fixed, has been tremendous, and we appreciate the effort.
Yeah, very much so. Thank you, Kimberly.
Midwest City is one of my faves. I just want everybody to know that.
It makes me happier to pay my $131 electric bill.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I wish mine was.
Paul, how many, do we have lights of our own, Midwest City, or is our lights, all the lights are owned by OG&E?
No, we do have some that are owned by the city, yes, ma'am, but they're in special areas or districts. Like, we have some near the Reed Center, for instance, that are actually our lights that are not maintained by OG&E, and those are also, we maintain those, and generally we'll do, we'll get work orders and try to get those changed out. Sometimes we lose a bunch of them at one time, or someone will try to steal the electricity, but ultimately, we do address those issues as they come up. Yes, Christine?
Are we in, are we going to have plans of LED?
We have been converting, yes. So, in those situations, when we do have, much like OG&E does, it's a value-driven decision, so we look at that. If we've got two or three out in an area, talking about ballast, by the time you get equipment out there and do the work, it's sometimes easier just to replace the head and go to an LED, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, OG&E.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Chair, entertain a motion to accept the report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you all for being here again, Kimberly. I do want to take a minute to make a point of order. We've got a young gentleman that's sitting in our audience. He was on the consent agenda and probably didn't realize he was even voted on. Marcus, could you stand up? He's, Marcus is our newest appointee to the Traffic Safety Commission, and we welcome you to this chaos, and good luck, brother. Thank you for being here, man. We now move into discussion item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of approving amendment number one to the construction management contract with Mac Hill Construction, Inc., associated with Reed Baseball Complex renovations in a guaranteed maximum price GPM not to exceed $2,247,000. We have a companion item to this, will be number five.
Honorable Mayor and council, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I believe the documents are pretty thorough that you have before you and the explanation. You approved this contract back in January of this year for us to begin the negotiation process. This just finalizes the GPM or the guaranteed maximum price associated with that contract. Now that the bids are open and all the value engineering is complete, the construction manager has set this price to be, he will deliver the project for this amount of money, guaranteed.
This is the same type of contract we used on the Reed Center addition. We use a GMP with CMS Willbrook, so it is, from a budgetary perspective, this is a way to set your price. Anything that goes over that, they have to pay, the contractor would have to pay for, though they have pretty good contingencies in there, but anyway, it does set the budget for us and limits our exposure. One thing else I'd like to say just real quickly is Von has spent a tremendous amount of work on this project, working with Mac Hill and ADG, and this, you started out, how far were you over budget?
We were almost a million dollars out of budget.
So, there were about a million dollars over budget, which, we've talked about that, the issues we're having with some of these geo-bonds projects, but Von, through various, I don't really like the word "value engineering," but that, I guess, is still the current term, but through going through and look at all the value engineering opportunities, he was able to get this project down to within $398,000 of what the voters voted on in the geo-bond. And then the next item is a supplement where we're going to three different funds, fund balances, and pulling $398,000 to supplement this project so that we can, we can start construction.
I, this is my first experience with a guaranteed maximum price construction management contract as well. Tim started this ball rolling back with the hotel, the Reed Center, but it's been a very good process. I like the way it works. I have to give Mac Hill... I have to give Mac Hill and wall engineering a lot of the credit. I mean, they really worked really, really hard on these bid packages to get them as close as possible within budget, and then massaged the process even more after the bids were open to get it, get it to where we got it today, so. I've been very pleased with the way the process has worked.
Is there any questions, Mr. Sullivan, on this? Chair to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Abstention, motion carries. Next item is a, item number five?
We have one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Item number five?
Item number five, discussion and consideration of supplemental budget adjustment to the following funds of fiscal year 2021, increasing the Midwest City Welcome Center Fund expense tourism seventy-four, Fund Seventy-four for a hundred-and-fifty thousand, Parks and Recreation Fund expenses, Park and Rec oh-six, one forty-eight, and dedicated tax two-thousand-and-twelve Fund expense, Midwest City Parks Fund twenty-three, a hundred thousand dollars.
And we just put this on for discussion, because we wanted to make you aware that the contract that Von just submit, just presented, that it will require some additional funding for the city of three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars, and it's coming from the Welcome Center for a hundred-and-fifty thousand, Parks and Rec for a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, and the dedicated sales tax for Parks and Streets for a hundred thousand.
Christine, could you lower your mic just a little bit?
Sorry. So, like I said, it's going to require three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand in additional funding for the contract he just presented, so it's coming from these three funds. These are all restricted revenues that, where Parks is one of the approved uses of those funds.
These are all from fund balances.
Yes.
So we're not taking away from any, any projects that we're working on, any other budgeted items.
Is there any questions, Ms. Byrne or Mr. Lyon? Chair to entertain a motion to approve the supplemental?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Got one abstention. Thank you, Christine, appreciate it. Item number six, Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of dissolving the Animal Shelter Council Committee based on the fact the mission of the group has been met since the planning phase of the new Animal Shelter Center is now complete with construction underway.
This, as you all know, there was a council-appointed committee when the animal shelter was first conceptually started. We had myself, Ms. Eads, Sean Reed, plus a vet and some citizen involvement in it, along with the representatives from the police department. And what it was, was to make sure that, since none of us are, had really much of a working knowledge of a dog, of animal shelter, other than a dog and cat goes there, we got some people involved in it that did work in our current shelter and that wanted to continue to work in the shelter when it was built, along with some vets, so we made sure that we got their needs done, met. The process, the goal of that group was to get it to the point where it was being built and not to be an operational committee. We have met that goal of it's being built, and now it's up to Mr. Lyons and Chief Clavie to carry that torch on, because now it's an operational deal. And as you all know, we're by charter not allowed to be involved in operational deals, so our committee has met its task, and it would be my recommendation that we absolve the committee and let the experts continue on. I would like to give a shout-out to Janet Beller, Katie Hawk, and Lindsay, I hope your last name's Hutchinson. Hope I got that right. These are, Katie, I've known my whole life, but these are three women who give of their time to the volunteer community, big time. They have their own nonprofit, good dogma. If you don't know what that is, look it up on Facebook and donate. I'm not associated with it. They push for this really, really, really hard. And then a young lady, Molly, showed up and gave an impassioned speech, who's probably one of the biggest fundraisers that our animal shelter has had. We would not be here today with this, I do not believe, if it was not for those four women and that one young girl. At least we wouldn't be here, we're in the form that we're in. And I just want to, we don't have enough people that show up to volunteer in the city. Those four women, three women and one young girl, should have shown everybody in this community what volunteering can do, and how it can positively change a community. So please, if you have something that matters to you, we probably have a board or a committee that you could volunteer for, and hopefully, like those women that I'm talking about, and I'm very honored to call friends, you all can make that same difference. So please, follow in their footsteps, show up. Marcus, thank you for volunteering. We need more people to come out, and without you guys, we can't do it, so thank you. And there's going to be, there's going to be, since we couldn't have a groundbreaking deal because of COVID, there will be a beam signing deal. So the other council members, when it comes down and you get notified by the boss in the back that they need you to show up, yeah, Jill, we're talking about you, to show up, please go by and sign the beam.
I just have a question. When we send the final, what is, the final draft?
We already had by the final draft that we've seen, that they've broken ground and they're about to start building.
Oh, wow. How long has that been?
Brandon, or one of the, Billy, somebody?
When did the final plans come to us, about six months ago?
Well, was there anything changed that we would update? That's what I'm basically asking from that.
I think that COVID kind of made all of our memories.
No, I want to know.
I'm sorry, Christine, I couldn't hear your question back.
I want to know, was there any updates from the final draft that you guys showed us, what, about six months ago, about a year?
Not that I'm aware of. Are you aware of anything?
I just wanted, any other, was anything else?
No, ma'am, the, we broke ground early April.
Okay.
They poured the slab last week, the floor, and the building, the rest of the building is being delivered this week.
And if I remember correctly, the slab was poured, you guys did a good job with the drone, you put it on social media, showing what it looks like from the air, so if you go to Midwest City's city government page, I think it was posted Friday, maybe? Sound right?
It was, I think so. Friday was the day.
It'll give you a good idea from the air of what the footprint's going to look like, the trees that they saved, and it's, it looks pretty cool.
Well, thank you all for the information of the update. That is something we can look at, because I hadn't heard any updates. I know you all had, but I have not, so thank you. I can go look at it myself.
And just an update to the earlier item about the lighting, we are working with OGN E to get lighting in our parking lot that's LED, and the trail that's associated was converted to LED recently, so it'll be well-lit.
Awesome, thank you. I just want to echo Sean's comments, and I want to say something really quickly about young Molly who came and talked to us about this idea. She and her grandmother continue to give to our animal shelter. She most recently is selling cat treats to trap, neuter, and release type of thing program and sponsors that. She got things for her birthday that she donated to the animal shelter. They've made frozen fruit pops, because our current shelter is not air-conditioned, taking them out to the dogs and giving them to the dogs. And I think she is, I think she just celebrated her either eleventh or twelfth birthday from memory. And so at that young age, she is one of the most impressive dedicated volunteers I've seen at her same tenure, and so very thankful for their contributions to our animal shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chair to entertain a motion to approve the discussion item number six.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. There's no action needed on item number seven, and we now move into the new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we do have a, an executive session associated with this agenda. Mr. Idem, or Mr. Lyon? Mr. Idem?
Discussion and consideration of entering into executive session is allowed under Title twenty-five, subsection three-oh-seven-B-one, to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, and resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. We'll do all these together, so I guess we need...
I would request that we recess from the council and move into our next agendas, and then come back to the executive session.
Motion to recess, the, we need a motion?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, we are hereby recessed. I call it order to Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, which discussed an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We now move into the new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call it order to the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We have three discussion items. Mr. Lyon, discussion item number one.
Discussion and consideration of approving minutes of August eleventh, two thousand twenty regular meeting is submitted.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item number two?
Yeah, we'll take no action on two.
No action on number two. Item number three?
Discussion and consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives, and there is no action needed on this item.
No action needed on number three. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session associated with this agenda, and Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration entering into executive session is allowed under twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, subsection three-oh-seven-B-four, discuss pending claims or action where public body at the advice of its attorney determines the disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct pending litigation or proceedings in the public interest.
Chair to entertain a motion to recess from the authority agenda and move back into the council agenda.
Do we have any on the executive session?
Um, yes, we will. But we're going to do them both at the same time, so.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. I call back to order the Midwest City Council agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in executive session. I'd ask that you clear the council chambers.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, what did we say?
We get a couple minute break.
Opposed?
We're going to stay down here. We can't socially distance up there, we can't here.